All right.
All right. Hey, welcome, everybody, to the Get Growing Live Weekly Work Session. I'm Ashley, Coach Ashley, as you've seen me in previous weeks, and you might have a familiar face in addition to mine here, or he might be someone that you've never seen before. So I want to go ahead and take a minute to introduce the founder and creator of Get Oiling, Greg Kilwin.
Thanks, Ashley. Hello, everyone. Welcome for, uh, welcome. Thanks for joining today. Hopefully, we can fill your brains with lots of good information about, you know, how we can help grow your businesses.
Fantastic. Yeah, so, um, as you guys are coming in, definitely pop over in the chat, and let's, uh, let's hear where you're coming in from. If you were here last week, I want to thank you again for your patience. You guys were like screaming from the chat section, and I was trying to hold questions till the end. And of course, as you have now learned, when you do a webinar by yourself, well, don't, don't do a webinar totally by yourself. Anyway, today, we're going to be a little more, um, a format like this, right? So as opposed to doing slides, we will do some screen shares and, you know, showing you different components and walking you through different stuff. But what, what I, Greg and I have been talking about this last week is the potential of kind of going in an alternating fashion, you know, so teaching a concept as we did funnels last week, and then having some more, you know, free-form Q and A and touching back on those concepts the following week. So, uh, so today, I would very much like to go over some of your questions from the funnel training last week. I certainly would love to see if you have put some of this into practice. If you want to paste a link in our, uh, in our chat box here, we would love to see what you've been doing. And, and, and this will, we'll say this is a very limited time offer. If you're interested in having us work with you on your funnel live today, I think we've got a little opportunity to do that. So write that, the first person writes that in the box. Now, mind you, it would be preferable that you have put together some components already so that we can help you with some of what you've already started to build. So, uh, we are planning to bring Amelia out. She had some questions about the contact manager. Amelia, can you confirm that you're, you've got some funnel pieces together and you want to work together on that? Because we were going to bring you out anyway, and we're definitely excited to do that. Let us know there in the comments. Welcome Wendy, Nicole, Amelia, and everyone who is tuning in right now. If you have, uh, if you have a question about funnels, go ahead and pop that in the chat. We're into the Q and A, uh, and, and we'll get started. And, oh, yeah, and there also just, you know, to kind of give you an idea of some other things we're going to cover today, there were a couple of, uh, questions that we received throughout the week. One of them with Amelia, and we'll go over that live with her on screen, is about the contact manager and ways to use that. And then we got another interesting question this week about how to get more people into a Facebook group. Just as a show of hands, for those of you who are here today, raise your hand if you use Facebook groups to either grow or to manage your membership base with Young Living. Lot of hands, pretty popular, right? So we're going to talk about some ways that you can leverage those groups and use Get Oiling to get more people into those groups. You know, specifically, if you're going to be using groups as a, as sort of a value add to educate people, which I highly recommend that you do something along those lines. All right, fantastic. All right, so, Amelia and Nicole, we've got questions and things to work on here. Let me see. Wish I had something ready, because I'd love to get some one-on-one help. Hey, Nicole, if you have any specific questions, which I see you've got, we can definitely get started on those as well. So Nicole says, "I'm finding people, I'm finding people, and my people aren't seeing what I post in those groups. Any suggestions for that? People in my groups aren't seeing posts." Okay, got you. Thanks for the clarification. Okay, so I don't know that we would be able to go full-on into, you know, a training right now on how to game the Facebook algorithm. But I will say this, um, if you are the admin of a group, you could certainly pin posts to the top of a group. But the more engaged your group is, the more people comment and engage on the respective posts in those groups, then the more likely it is that they're going to see those posts. So I would just, uh, just as a tip here, top of the, you know, top of topic there, to, when you get people into groups, do everything you can to explain to them that they should opt in to get notifications from that group, so they can get what you post there. And then to back it up, and this is actually a tactic that we use to get engagement on our Facebook page, is if you have an email list, and people in your group are on your email list, which this should absolutely be the case, people shouldn't be able to access your group unless they are on your email list, subscribed to you, and then you send that link out. When you post in there, send an email out to that list and say, "Hey, I just posted this in the group. Do me a favor. Come tell me your point of view," right? Or if you're, you ask a question and do something engaging there. So I, I hope that that is helpful to you. Cool, so no questions about funnels? All right, I hope I see some really great funnel work this week. Awesome. So, um, Amelia, can we bring you out? Let me see if I can do that. There we go.
Hello, can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay. I was trying to create, um, an event. Well, I shouldn't, I realize I probably shouldn't have tried to create the event, but anyway, this is what happened. I tried to create an event, letting people know to watch this particular video that I created. It's my journey about Young Living and the, um, the Basic 101 Class. And it's only eight minutes, so I was trying to send that out. And of course, uh, Get Oiling has you send out like a, uh, a notification inviting people to do that. But I think I did it wrong, because it looks like a lot of, first of all, I sent it to 100 people, and only 56 of them got it. And then, um, but I'm, I'm not getting any, like, I can't see if they have looked at it, or I don't know if they got it. So then the other 40, the other 44 of them, I, I tried to do it again, and none of them replied. But then on my weekly Get Oiling report, it says some people saw it. It's very confusing, anyway.
Okay, are, are you open to, uh, having us walk through actually inside your account? So we could walk through this together?
Sure. Why not?
Awesome. Hey, Greg, are, do you want to do that? Like, are you able to?
Sure, yeah, actually, I was, I was just opening up her account here, so.
Perfect, perfect.
Let me do a screen share.
Yes, that would be so cool, so everybody can see what we're working through here. So Amelia, you created an event in Get Oiling, so like with the Events Manager?
Yes.
Okay, and so your, what was, your goal was to get people to watch an eight-minute video, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. And is, was that something you were going to present live, like in a Zoom meeting, or just a recording that you wanted to send people to?
I was sending a recording.
Okay, and where do you, where do you have the recording posted currently? Is it, uh, in, uh, like a YouTube account, or what's the, where do you keep the video?
It's right in the, uh, in the email or in the invitation. So can you see it right now? Looks like.
Yeah, can you see the screen? Yep, I did log in, as you know.
Yay, okay.
So they can see there.
Yes. I went into, uh, events, and I created it, and within the, um, the email, I embedded it. That's what I did. And now I think I see why it didn't work. There, so that's it.
Okay, there's your video.
Yes.
Did it load?
It doesn't look like it's loaded for some reason. Yeah, so the play button's not working. Let me go edit that and see. Where did you put the video? Was it like Vimeo or YouTube or something like that?
No, it's, it's just on my computer. So I think that's why the problem happened, because
Okay.
what you guys are doing, um, right now is, uh, when I sent it to my daughter as like a test, she said, "Hey, it's not loading." And then we reloaded it, and then it would work. But I'm thinking because we embedded it, and it's like a, um, what, what's the name of it? Cue, what's the name of it? It's, because I, I guess I should have sent it as a YouTube, um, video or something else, instead of trying to embed it into the, the actual email.
Right, right. Yeah, you definitely want to have it hosted somewhere.
Yes, okay, that's probably one of the problems we're having.
Yep, if you put this on YouTube, put the video on YouTube, and then you can reinsert it with this video button, which is probably what you did, I'm guessing, maybe. It sounds like you used the embed code, but, um, either way, yeah, you can, you can put that in here. And then as far as the message you had mentioned about, like, the number of people who saw it, if you click on Messages over here, that shows, and I think, I'm guessing this is the one here that you sent. If you click on the stat, or actually anywhere on here except View, it'll show you some more detailed statistics. But it shows that almost 90% of the emails were delivered, and there's only a certain percentage of opens, um, you know, because not everyone opens it, not everyone clicks it, but it's actually, I mean, for the number,
Those are bad rates.
Those are really good numbers, actually.
Right, let me tell you, yesterday, I only saw zeros.
Okay.
I, I don't know, that's, uh, well, I'm, I'm happy with that. What I realized I'm gonna go back and do is, I saw the report, the weekly report, and I did see where some people actually went in, and so I'm, at, at least to my website. So I'm gonna contact those people and say, "Thank you for, you know, checking out my website." And if there's any question, you know, that, I'm gonna at least touch them in that way to kind of get them back interested in, you know, so now I realize what I did wrong. I, I shouldn't have embedded it. I should have had it hosted on YouTube. And I think I heard Ashley talking about that before, to have it on YouTube, and then, um, then they can click it and then go over to that, that, instead of having it in the email, because of course, it looks like it gets, uh, it doesn't play all the time, so.
Right, yep.
Yeah, and, and I would actually recommend, uh, Amelia, when, so if, Greg, could you scroll down just a little bit? So I can see some more of what we've got here. Okay, register if you would like to learn more. So tell me a little bit about, um, and just, so while we're here, I, I want to help you get the most out of, of the effort that you're putting in here, and make sure that it's working in the context of your system the way that you want it to. So your goal in inviting people, inviting people to this event is for them to be able to view this video?
Yes.
And then what is the step that you would like to have them take after they view the video?
Well, what I was trying, this is actually, um, I guess I'm doing the 90-day challenge along with this, that's why.
Okay, good.
I have not done a whole lot, you know, trying to communicate with people other than doing one-on-one. And so I said, "I'm just gonna jump in and use my warm contacts." Most of these are my sorority sisters, and I remember Ashley saying, you know, "Those are the people that would like to, you know, they want to, they, they should want to work with you." So, so my goal was to at least get them to register and, you know, look at my video, uh, because my video talks about my journey. I talked like about two or three minutes about that, and then I played the Essential Oils one-on-one from Young Living video. So it's those two together. And so what I'm trying to do is see if I can get them to, um, you know, become interested with me. And if they come back with questions, then I, then I can start a dialogue back and forth about, you know, what, what's good about Essential Oils, or do you want me to come and do a, uh, an event at your home? You know, that kind of thing, just to kind of get them to communicate with me.
Sure. Okay, so what, what I would suggest is, um, so this, this actually, the page that we're on right now is, if you could imagine, you know how we, we have this, this webinar that we're on right now, right? And you registered for this webinar. And, and there wasn't anything on the registration page other than just a brief sort of rundown of, "Here are the things that we're going to cover." And then you register, and then when it's time for it, you receive the information. So my suggestion would be that if you wanted to set this up as an online event with a date and time, that you might just have, um, have sort of an overview of, of some of the things you're going to cover, not going into a great deal of depth, so that people can commit then to, uh, you know, to review information at a specific date and time, if you wanted to do it that way. But what might be more effective for you, in this case, if you're not planning to, um, to do this live, and, and you are essentially just trying to get people who are in, um, in your contacts to agree to watch a video, and then to follow up with them after they watch the video, is that you create, uh, very simply, actually, kind of a funnel, like we taught last week, where you, uh, go over to landing pages, um, over here under Contacts to the left of the page. And what you can do is just pick any, um, any style that you like. I know we, we used nine last week, uh, and, you know, we could, yeah, we could go ahead and do that. And so you could enter, you know, just some kind of nice image. It can be an image of you with your oils. I think that would be especially effective for you, because you are sending this to people who know you. Um, and so them seeing your face on this page will do a lot for them to, you know, feel good about entering their information on a form on the internet, right?
Yes.
And so then here, say, um, uh, you, you can say, "I've, you know, I've invited you here to share with you some information, uh, that's changed my life." Enter, you know, enter your info here, and I'm gonna get you the video on the other page. And, um, you know, and then maybe you also have some, some little something you want to give away, you know? And, and I'm also going to give you, you know, a page of some of my favorite DIY skincare recipes or something like that, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and so remember, this isn't the first thing that we build. This is, if, if you watched the, the training from last week, you'll want to go to Campaigns first.
Okay.
But this is just an idea. This is one of the components, right? So you would have them, instead of going to a group, or not a group, an event, you would have them go to a landing page. So in Campaigns, what you're gonna want to do is you're gonna want to create a new one, of course. And then you give it a name, you, you know, go through all of that. Of course, we go through this in the training from last week. And, uh, and then what you'll do in the campaign is you will first, um, send them a, um, you know, thank you for, um, you know, so thank you, a confirmation. Give them the thing that you're going to give them. So say you want to, you know, copy and paste some recipes into there. You could certainly do that here. And then you would send a link to that video.
Okay.
And then what you're going to see when they receive this email from you, you'll see who's opened it, or how many of them have opened it, and their individual contact. You'll see whether they've opened it. You'll also see if they clicked the link to watch the video.
Oh, wow. Oh, this is awesome. This is what I should have done with this email, I mean, this video. Okay. Got it.
There you go. Um, and so, yeah, you, you can put that on YouTube for free. If you want to take it a step further, actually, the second funnel, um, demonstration that I gave in the funnel training from last week was how to use custom pages to create a video lead magnet, uh, where you just have a custom page that has a video on it. Maybe there's a button there. Uh, you don't even have to do that, if you want to just be very simple about it. You could write more or less what you wrote on the event there on a custom page. Put your video link in there, the embed code off of a YouTube channel, and then you've even got them still on your website. And if you wanted to have them be able to link off from there to where they can contact you, there's, you know, uh, there's options, really, you could do anything with a custom page. So in this first email, you want to give them what you've promised. Give the link to the video, the link to the page that hosts the video. Uh, and then, and an email, maybe a couple of days later, you can say, "Hey, I sent you an email the other day. Just wanted to make sure that you got the link that was in it. Were you able to watch the video?"
Okay.
And, and it'll do it automatically. So if somebody registers today, they'll get it two days after. If you set it up that way, if they register tomorrow, they'll get it two days after that. So basically, 48 hours after they've received the link where they could watch the video right now, you'll know whether or not they did, and they'll, they'll automatically get a reminder email.
This is awesome. This is exactly what I wanted to do.
Good, good. So that makes sense to you.
Yes.
Perfect, perfect. Then if you wanted to, ooh, I'm sorry, puppy. He always likes to get right under the most dangerous thing.
That's where mine is sitting, right at my.
He's kind of quit doing this. But if you wanted to do another email in a sequence like this, so that you, you've sent them the email with video, you've sent them what you've promised them, if you've promised them recipes or something, you've sent a follow-up page, you get a chance to see that. And then maybe a couple more days later, you can say, you know, "Now you've had a chance to watch it. Tell me what, what did you like best?" Or, um, you know, "Are, are you interested in having me set up, uh, you know, a, a party in your home where I can, you know, we can, we can have a spa party" or something like that, especially if you're sending it to your sorority sisters. Like, "I'd love to set up a spa party in your home. It'll get you some, you know, you'll get some hostess gifts." You know, hit Reply and let me know if that's something you're interested in. These are all things that you could put in a sequence like that, things that you would normally reach out and want to ask these people that you would reach out to anyway. And these are the kind of things you want to put in campaigns, you know? It's not, it's not about using magic language to get people to do something, you know, manipulate people or whatever. It's really like, it, what you want to do is exactly what you would do anyway. You're just not having to do it every single time for every single person.
Yes.
And then, and you're just triggering opportunities for people to say, "Oh, yeah, I want to talk about this." And then you talk with them, because they said, "Yeah, I'm interested right now," and that's the best use of your time.
Wow, yes. This, that's why I'm gonna really love using this Get Oiling. This is exactly how it should be done, only talking to people who are interested in what you, what you, what you have. Not going to, uh, not going through what I was going through before, anyway. But this is good. Okay.
Awesome.
I'm, I'm tickle pink. Thank you.
Yes, of course. Did you have any other questions while we've got you here? Anything else?
The other one was about the, um, my contact list. I know I must have done something horribly, horribly wrong. I, I did my, um, you know, I uploaded my Young Living contacts, so that's fine. But I got really bold and somehow uploaded my Google contacts, and now I have a big mess in there. And so I have a lot of them that say, "No name," and so, well, yeah, "No name," and there's nothing in there. So I was going onesie-twosie, trying to delete them. So I said, "Okay, that's crazy." So then I noticed that most of the people that were loaded, were loaded in as my product customers. And they're not my customers. So then I sat down one night trying to make sure they all were prospects, you know? And so, um, and so I was wondering if there was a way to clean that all up, or should I just? Since I did, I have at least 100 good people that are my prospects right now, and should I delete all the rest of them? And the other question was, there was one more question. I read somewhere where if you sent, like, some of them have, I have their phone number, and some of them I only have their email, and some of them I have both. When I send something out, will it go to both or not?
They're both really good questions.
Yeah, I can, I can hop in on that. First of all, congratulations on this amazing number here. You hit your goal. Woo-hoo, it's not even the end of the week yet.
Yes, that was me inviting everybody I knew and trying to follow my little steps. I'm really wanting to work this, I want it to work out. I'm so excited about it, so.
Awesome.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Yeah, so, uh, I guess the first question about the contact cleanup. Since we're recording this, I don't know if I necessarily want to go in there with your contact information, but what I can do, I can reach out after this call, and, um, we can figure that out. I'll send you an email or something, and I'll take a look if they were all loaded during the same time. Like, it is probably possible for, uh, at least on this end, to figure out when they were loaded, and then just delete those segments or that particular chunk of contacts, or do, do their other mass updates. But I'll reach out to you after this.
Okay.
And your other question was, uh, sorry, what was that again?
The, like, oh, if, if, okay. Some of the contacts, I have their, uh, mobile number, and some I have their email. But, uh, I was reading somewhere, like, if you send something like as an invite, they have to have an email first before it goes to their mobile, I think. So I was wondering if that's true, and what should I do?
There's a couple of different ways of doing that, of sending out emails and texts. So normally, through the contact manager, if you send an email, and maybe what I should do here is switch over to a demo account, um, just give me one second, I'll switch here. But generally speaking, it's like, you can specify when you're sending, like, which medium it goes out in. So if you wanted to send by email, or if you wanted to send by text, it'll, it'll do that. If you want it to go like different based on their contact, then you would have to use a campaign, and there's a per-contact setting for the campaign, and I will show you that. Okay, so now I'm, now I'm in my demo account here with all sorts of junk data, so I can go in here and play around. So I'll, I'll open up, like, this is a text-only contact, for example. And if I were to, you know, it doesn't have an email address. If I were to like select it and say Mail, it's not gonna get an email. So you could send out your texts, in other words. So like under the Actions, you could say, "Hey, I'm gonna text everybody. Everyone who has a phone number, it's gonna send them a text." And then you could go send them a mail right after that, too. And then anyone who has an email will get an email. Now, that might overlap some people, but, you know, it depends on what percentage have phone numbers and what don't. When you're editing a contact, though, let me show you that other setting with the campaign. So like, if I go Edit, there's a setting down here about sending campaigns by email, text, or both. So every contact has a different setting. That's if you're going, like, you know, editing a contact, you can add a campaign. So you could add, you know, whatever campaign you want to, and then that will send by whatever you have chosen here. So that's kind of the way of, uh, or you can do it either way, I guess.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, my questions are all answered. Thank you.
Wonderful, wonderful. Yeah, thank you, and keep up the great work. It's, it's so cool to see the, just the creativity and the light bulbs going off. It's awesome.
Well, you're very helpful, Ashley. You really, really are. I'm telling you. I'm listening to your 90-day videos. I'm, I'm just, uh, so I'm, I'm really glad you're our coach.
I am really glad I'm your coach, too. Keep us apprised of your progress. We're very, very excited for you. All right, so we have, Greg, we have a question from, um, we have a question from Nicole. She says, "Because there is a Zoom platform with Get Oiling, do I need to keep my other Zoom account? I currently pay monthly to have that other Zoom account. Would the Zoom account through Get Oiling be equivalent to the other account I pay for?"
Yes, I mean, the, the one exception might be is if you have a smaller plan, and I'm just looking up your plan here. Okay, so it looks like you've got the premium plan, which means that you do have all 100 attendees. So it is actually the equivalent of the other Zoom account, so there's really no need to keep it. You know, unless, unless there's, if you do have like meeting invites that you've created over there, you'd have to recreate them in Get Oiling and then send out the new number. But otherwise, yeah, it's the same product, so you don't need to keep them both. A lot of people cancel that and save some, whatever Zoom charges these days, $15 or something like that a month.
Yep, there you go. Save some money. Put it all in one place. All right, so Xena says, "I've had my account Get Oiling for 10 months or so, and I just have not been able to learn how to use it. I'm behind on these videos, but I'm looking forward to learning how to use this system for my business. I'm not techie, so it takes me a little time to learn, but excited at the opportunities it looks like I have with this site." You know, we're excited for you as well, and feel free, continue tuning in. If you ever want to come out, like, uh, like our friend Amelia just did, you're welcome to. That's, that's really what these sessions are for. I think that, um, well, I know that, uh, the, the nature of what we're doing here is, is really stepping outside of what is generally taught in, in Young Living and in this industry at large. And so you're, you're kind of, you're, you're learning a new thing. And the thing is, is this, this is a skill that will, you, that you will carry with you throughout your, your career, your journey in this business. And, uh, and it'll help you progress faster once you get the hang of it, so it's worth learning. And, uh, and sometimes it just, sometimes you need a different voice or a different perspective to help it click for you. And, and we're here to help you do that. All right, "Life got crazy. I mean, I was unable to get on the previous calls. Where can I find the replays?" Becky, super glad you're here, and, uh, those replays currently, uh, for the time being, are hosted on our YouTube channel. We have a playlist for the, uh, the Get Growing Weekly Live Work Session there. Sweet, thank you all about saving money. All right, Jaclyn says, "I just signed up and tried to reset my DNS at GoDaddy for my URL. It has not yet changed. I tried to call them yesterday. The number was busy literally all day long." That sounds so frustrating. Oh, I'm with you with that. Um, I'll try again today. Excited to change over to Get Oiling. Jaclyn, if you haven't already, uh, definitely reach out, um, right? And I don't know, Greg, if that's like a direction that you give, or?
Yeah, that is. I can look into it and see what's going on, you know, if the transfer made or whatever. But yeah, just drop us an email, drop me an email.
Fabulous. Oh, and, and by the way, speaking of. Fabulous. Oh, and, and by the way, speaking of dropping things, Greg just dropped a link to the YouTube channel playlist, uh, in the chat box. So you can catch all of our replays for now, right there. We'll let you know if you move them somewhere else. If and when we do, it'll be somewhere even better and it'll be super exciting and you'll know about it. Um, the email is info@getoiling.com, Jaclyn. All right. Um, but do, um, all right, so Jesse has a question. Good morning. Thank you for doing this. I'm coming with hat in hand. I've been paying for GetOiling service for several years now, have yet to set up my website at all. You're not alone. It, it takes some of us a long time to get to that. It's totally fine. All right, so I'd like to ask about the possibility of having a one-on-one tutorial for the beginner. In my work life, I'm juggling three businesses and I've come to a realization that I want to focus more on my Young Living business, may have a private conversation with someone. Yes, Jesse, uh, you can, uh, either info@getoiling.com or ashley@getoiling.com. And, uh, we do have some, uh, capacity to work with people one-on-one. Uh, we can sit down and talk about whether or not that's a fit for you. We do have some coaching programs and things like that that we do. Uh, beyond obviously the, the training that's, uh, you know, available inside the system. If you're looking for something more personalized. Let's see, um, also need to catch up on past videos. Uh, Amelia, uh, he said, what's the link between Amelia Taylor and GetOiling? Amelia is a member just like you, Jesse. And, uh, and, and we're here to help you in the same way. If you have any questions, you can come out live like she just did. And, um, and yeah, feel free, of course, uh, you know, catching up on the previous work session videos, uh, watching the 90-day challenge videos and the many like just short getting started, quick, easy, under a minute-long videos that Greg has done that are under the help section as well. Um, and with that little rocket when you, uh, you know, look at the top of progress bar, uh, in your dashboard. Uh, there's a lot of, like, if you follow those steps first, you'll be set up for success. Obviously start hacking away at learning the concepts, uh, in the 90-day challenge. But if you're looking for something deeper, you could always reach out to us and we can explore whether or not coaching is a fit. All right, Val asks, uh, does the Zoom work for doing other things besides just my GetOiling business platform? When I join a meeting somewhere else and Zoom loads automatically, do I need my GetOiling open to do other stuff?
You can use Zoom for whatever you want to, actually. I mean, it doesn't have to just be GetOiling because it's just kind of a regular Zoom account. And it doesn't really, you don't have to have GetOiling open if you are joining someone else's meeting because all Zoom attendees are free. It's only the hosts that technically have to pay, you know? Like if you were to get a, an account through Zoom directly, um, you can send out as many meeting links as you want to and all the people can attend for free. So that's the same thing here. You don't need GetOiling open, uh, to do that.
Awesome. Okay, and, uh, and yes, to confirm, Jesse, that is on your dashboard, uh, where you can find all of that, uh, you know, just ticking all the boxes, making sure your system is fully set up. You actually see that progress bar across the top of your dashboard. Uh, and then beyond that, if you click help in the top right corner, uh, there's lots of topics there and of course you scroll down far enough, you get to the 90-day challenge and you've got, uh, yeah, oh, here we go. See that? That pretty little bar right there?
Let me just show how this works. Uh, some people miss this, but if you click anywhere on this bar, it expands. And here's this cool little rocket that she was talking about. And each one of these steps, these setup steps, there's like three different groups of them. But any one of these, you just click on it and then it'll pop up with a little video and you can watch it. See, this one's only 58 seconds long. Um, some of these you mark done, others you have to actually do the action that it shows in the video and then it will be marked as done automatically. So yeah, that's, uh, there's a lot of awesome stuff in here for, for just figuring out, you know, doing the basics, like shows you how to set up a landing page or import contacts and undertake action. You can create an event, uh, write a blog post, email monthly promotion. And the help center that she was just talking about is over here under help. And for those that, uh, do like a little more written material, we did just add a quick reference guide, which is a PDF that you can download. And some people like printing it out and, uh, yeah, it's got some of the common functions. I think the help videos are a little more in-depth.
Yeah, and, and they're all, they're all quite short as well. Um, I know a lot of people, uh, you know, kind of cringe at the thought of sitting down for another hour to learn another concept. It's totally worth it, but if you only have a couple of minutes, then you could breeze through a lot of these videos that Greg has created here, uh, under overall and specific help. And, and, and the system setup as well, there's a lot of, uh, corresponding information with that. Cool. All right, let's see, do we have some more questions? Appreciate the checklist. Being new can be overwhelming, but we need some. What is this, some stupid 2D gaming music to feel motivated? Maybe we can code that into the back office and you could have like an optional Pac-Man theme song running.
Yep, Super Mario or something. Send an email, it makes a noise.
I just want to log in and hear that doot, 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 doot. And of course, like, oh, but wouldn't that be funny though? Like if, if you wanted to time yourself to get a task done. So let's just say for instance, I need to send out a text message to, uh, invite 50 people to an event I'm going to have on Thursday. Um, and I'm going to give myself like two minutes to get that done. Set the timer and then you know how at the end of the Super Mario stage, when you're running out of time, it starts speeding up?
All right.
Get that email out. That would be really cool. We should.
That would be awesome.
All right, so we got, uh, from Wendy, uh, when I set up a landing page with a registration form, am I able to change the settings per page? Or are the registration forms changed across the board? Like I wanted to have it optional on one page, but not on another. Is that possible?
Yes, it is. Let me, um, I'll share out the screen again here. And I can show you the landing pages. Pop up the help library again. So I assume you're talking about this landing page. There is, you know, landing page feature through the website page builder as well. But I'll just, um, pop in here under, you know, I'm not quite sure what all this is at the demo. I think, um, this is something you worked on last week. But under settings, yeah, all these, all these page settings here, like the fields that are required, that is different per landing page. So you could not require email and require phone-on-one and try that out. And basically have, you know, multiple landing pages going at any given moment to figure out which one works best. You could send them to different places after they register. Um, you know, there's all, all sorts of different options there too, so.
Ooh, can we, can we go over to the, um, uh, let's show you as well. Cause I know Wendy, you're, you're sort of an advanced user and I think that some more of you might appreciate seeing this as well in custom pages. Uh, you all know that you can create something that just looks like an article or a webpage. But you could also of course create landing pages, custom landing pages and custom pages. And when you do this, let's just say that you wanted to have a very customized form, uh, where maybe you needed to get more information from them than just their name, email and phone number. You have, how many is this? An additional four options. So if you wanted to ask them, uh, you know, uh, do you currently, um, you know, do you currently use? Or, oh, there you go. Are you already a Young Living member? Perfect. And then it's required. Yeah, and you can ask them all kinds of questions like that. Um, and then of course, you know, you, you tag them and you've, you know, everything which you want to know. And it just all loads into, uh, their contact information.
Yep, and you can trigger that based on either a button or, you know, whether they, when they try to move away from the page or if they scroll down halfway or after a timer, or all three if you want to.
Yep, yep. And that's really cool too, because, um, I, I'm sure you guys have seen this. If you, you know, maybe search for a recipe on the internet and you land on a blog and you, you like scroll down the page a certain amount and you get this pop-up. Or when you, uh, move your cursor to maybe close that tab, it pops up like, oh, hey, by the way, don't leave yet. I got this thing for you. You can do that on your GetOiling site with this feature. It's pretty cool, right?
Totally.
Oh, Nicole, you will know soon enough, but not today. Good eye there. All right, I'm going to leave it at that. Um, okay, Jesse, yeah, I, of course, we're, we're really happy to help. Yes, we're going to leave you in suspense there, Nicole. I don't know what you're talking about. All right, cool. So, um, okay. Cool, all right, yeah. Great questions today. Um, let me see, and the Q and A done, okay, cool. So since we are here, let's see, so we had, we've covered the question about the contact manager. We're making super great time and, uh, and so we were going to talk a little bit about Facebook groups, right? Um, I did make a quick, you know, suggestion, uh, but how about this? Um, let's maybe show how you might be able to get people to promote a Facebook group, right? Uh, to get more people into a Facebook group using a landing page. Right? So if you guys remember from the funnel training, uh, one of the core components of your funnel is a lead magnet. Now, a lead magnet is just honey for a fly, right? And it can be any number of things. And the, the means by which it's delivered can span, you know, it can run the gamut from a series of emails like we covered, a video on a landing, on a, uh, on a custom page like we covered. But it could also mean exclusive access to a private Facebook group where you get support, inspiration and recipes. Your Facebook group could be your lead magnet if you're talking about it the right way. If you're making it clear what the benefit is that people would get out of being a part of this community. So what you would then do is, uh, let me see. I can, I can do this or Greg, do you want to do the screen share demo? Let's just do a quick landing page and, and write it up. And then, um, I guess we don't have, uh, a URL to a Facebook group, uh, that we could put this into. But you'll, you'll see what we mean when we get to that point.
Sure, let me share out here again.
And actually, if anyone wants to volunteer, I guess we could do this for you right now.
That's true.
Yeah, yeah, if somebody wants to, okay, Amelia says volunteer. I, I love it. I love it. All right, gold star. Amelia, I'm going to bring you back out. If I can, that whole like, I'm not techie thing, y'all need to understand, that's me too. Okay, here we go. Where'd you go? Allowed to talk? Perfect. All right, Amelia, got you back.
Okay, so do you need me to open up my Facebook, um, uh, group?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. And, um, let me see, if you would like to share your screen, you're welcome to. Um, if you look down under the controls, you can, you can do that. You could share your videos so we could see your smiling face or you can just share your screen. It's up to you.
Okay. I actually am cheating. My daughter's here with me.
Hi.
And I don't mind sharing my face, so, uh, is that right there? Okay. And, oh, I don't see how to share my face, but that's okay.
That's okay, that's okay. But down in, at the very bottom of your Zoom screen, you should see a green button that says share. That will share your screen.
Okay. I don't see it. Oh, let's, let's at least get it, go ahead and open up the, um, Facebook thing.
Well, here's, here's what we could do. If we don't get that, then that's totally fine. If you can, when you go to, uh, when you go to your, uh, Facebook group, go up to the address bar in your, uh, in your browser and copy that link.
Okay.
And then, uh, and then just, uh, let me see. You can, I think you can message the panelists directly. You can send it to us directly unless you want everybody else to, you know, get an invitation to your group or that are here. If you don't mind that, certainly fine, however you want to do that. And then we will plug it in and, uh, and, and, and put that to work for you.
Okay.
And I guess Greg, since you've got, um, you've got her account pulled up, can you do a screen share?
Yeah, I could just share that out.
And we'll just, we'll just build it out.
We do?
Perfect.
Okay. All right. Yes.
All right, so I've got the, all right, Amelia has put the link in the, um, in the chat, so we'll grab that. Okay, so, um, do you already have any images that are uploaded to your, um, to your account? Like do you use any images in your email and stuff?
But mine is like brand spanking new.
Oh, okay, cool.
And on my video, the video that I put in that email is in there.
Okay. Cool, all right. So we'll, we'll just, we'll put some things in just as a placeholder for you and show you how you can go and change it. All right, so let's just do a new landing page. All right, and so up here in the, um, oh yeah, and we'll show you how to, we, we can just keep this image here, but just to show you, if you hover over it right here, uh, hover over the image and you, you see down there?
Yeah.
It says replaced?
Yes.
All you gotta do is just put the image in that you want right there from inside your computer or, you know, drag and drop, however you want to do it. Okay? Cool, all right, and so then over here, we'll say, um, join our private community.
Yes.
And then underneath, we could say, get access to, um, exclusive, uh, support recipe and how-to on living your most abundant life.
Oh, yeah. This is so smart. This is what I've been looking for.
All right, so then, um, and then I would go down here under the newsletter and I would change that. So yes, uh, let me into the group. All right, and then you want to change the copy on the button and have it say, uh, let me in.
Okay.
Great. And then what you're going to do is go up to settings from here and go to page settings. All right, you gotta give it a name. We do this every time we create a landing page and we'll call this, um, we'll call this the secret invitation.
Okay.
Okay, and then give it a tag. Now, we haven't created a campaign yet, but you're going to want to create one.
Okay.
We're, we're working this backwards.
Do we want to do like Facebook group or secret invitation or what do you think?
Um, yeah, I would, so internally, I definitely would call it Facebook group.
Okay.
Just so you know what that is. Secret invitation is something that they're actually going to see. So you want that, like, that's forward-facing. Okay, and so you can click show a message after registration and then you can put in, um, so a couple of things, you can say, welcome, uh, you know, over the next, uh, you know, I, I just sent an email to your inbox, uh, with information on how to join our group. In the meantime, check out my website and, uh, the information I've already shared about, uh, the abundant life I am blessed to live or, you know, something to that effect. Right? And so there's a couple of ways that we can, um, link this up. So number one, um, you obviously want to, when somebody registers, you want to send them a link to what they want in their email as well as deliver it immediately if possible. So what you can do, um, if your Facebook group is not a secret one, right? So one where, okay, so if you have a secret group on Facebook, uh, if you click on the link, then, um, it's going to say this page might not exist, right? You get an error message from Facebook. So if you have a group that's already like that, then you're going to want to send instructions in the email for them to like, in the campaign that you create, uh, that they receive right away on how they can get access. However, if it's not a secret group, then what you can do is go down here underneath where it says, after registration, redirect visitor to.
Okay.
And then instead of my website, you're going to put in your Facebook group URL. And make sure you click that button. And then you hit done.
Okay.
And then you save it and view it. And I know we don't have a campaign attached, but this should take us there immediately.
Okay.
Should I fill it out here?
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's do it. All right. All right, continue. And there it is.
Ooh, okay.
There you go.
All right, this is awesome. Okay.
Yeah, it'll be, I, I think it's going to kick off the default campaign, which is the new prospects campaign. So definitely want to do that. I mean, for now, actually, what I can do, I'll just set it to the no campaign, campaign, which means they won't get any emails. No email is better than emails that don't make any sense. Or that aren't, aren't related to this, so, um, you can always hook that up later. Yeah, to, to make the campaign, I think, you know, we touched on that earlier, but that's under contact settings. Yeah. To, to make the campaign, I think, you know, we touched on that earlier, but that's under contact settings and then campaigns. And then you can write one there and then go back in your landing page and attach it.
Yep. And, and so here's, here's, and this actually goes back to the question that was asked early on about people in the group not seeing your post, right? So if you get people joining your group by first entering their information here, you now have them tagged as Facebook group in your contacts. And so when you make a post in a group, so say maybe you want to share that there's a promotion, or if it's a team group, you want to share, you know, some kind of incentive for your builders. Then you could make the post in the group and then go into your contact manager, select the people who are tagged Facebook group and send them an email and say, you know, hey, real quick, I just made a post in our private group, wanted to make sure you saw it. And then you, you send a link to it, right? So you go and you grab the link from the post, which you can do from the top right hand corner of a Facebook post in a group or on Facebook generally. And then you copy that URL into your, your email that you send out to the people who are tagged that way.
Wow. This is so great.
See, you can do everything with this.
I am going to be on fire this week.
Awesome. It looks like everybody else is too. The comments are blowing up over here like, oh my God, I didn't know you could do that. And I, I really, I recommend you guys, if you're doing any kind of, if you're doing any kind of promotion on Facebook at all, whether it's internally with groups with your existing membership base, with your prospects, whoever it is, make sure that you are going at it from both directions. Do not assume that Facebook is going to show anybody anything because they want, they want this. Right? They, they want you to pay for, for, for exposure. And so the, the beautiful thing, and this is, this is the reason why you want to have an, an email list that you own is because you can send out a promotion and you don't have to pay Facebook five bucks to maybe show it to people, right? You don't have to roll those dice. And so all you gotta do is say, hey, friends on my list that opted in to hear from me, here's a thing that you want to see. And, and so that, it serves a couple of purposes. Obviously you're getting the word out. But then the beautiful thing that happens is when people actually start responding to that and they start engaging, then Facebook starts to see its, its algorithms start to see that you are somebody that people want to hear from. And then after you get that kind of momentum going, they'll just automatically start showing things that you put out there to the people on your list more frequently. Or they'll bump that group up because there's more stuff happening in it. Because it's, it's, it's seeing that, oh, this group isn't asleep. It's very active. Obviously the people who are in it are very interested in, in seeing what's going on here. So we're going to make sure that everyone in this group gets this at the top of their newsfeed.
Wow.
And that's how you can make that happen.
I knew there was a trick to it. I just didn't know how. We have the secret sauce now.
That's right. That's right. Very cool. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course, of course. So we got any other, any other questions before we wrap up for today? Go ahead and let us know. Oh, we got a hand raised. Nicole, hello. Nicole, do you have your hand raised? Cause you have a specific question. And if I've missed it, I'm sorry. Oh, oh, okay. Cool. Let's do yours real quick then. If, if, if you would still like, Nicole, would you like to have us, you know, I'm going to bring you out. Hold on. There we go. Hey, Nicole.
Hey.
Good to hear you. All right. So are you looking to accomplish something similar?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I'm loving everything about Get Oiling, all the functionality. I, I find it a little overwhelming in trying to actually get all the foundations set up and all the campaigns. I do understand you guys have great campaigns. But I also heard you last week when you said, you know, have your campaigns be your own voice in the way that you would normally speak to your people because it's, it, well, it's just better. And so, but just to find the time to do all those things. But I, I did not, I admit, I watched the replay of the funnels yet. That's a big thing for me. But I am loving this driving traffic to your Facebook page. Now, listening to this, I'm hearing you say that it can't be like a secret group. So would you recommend, like, would you recommend that I set up a separate group, like for prospecting? And then have my group for my team and then drive separate kind of campaigns to each of those groups respectfully? So that one I can use like in my team for training and then one I can use for prospecting?
Absolutely. 100%. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. I would say, so with, with a value forward group, and this is actually something that your entire team can leverage because everybody that's new doesn't have to be the essential oils expert, right?
Yes.
So I would have a general community that you build, you know, that's got good vibes and a lot of activity. Enlist your sharers, your teammates, your active builders to invite their people there too. Like, don't, don't make it just one person's party, right? Have it be, you know, have it be a true community thing. Obviously maybe you are going to be a primary authority there, but you're very much in consideration of your other people bringing their folks in and so on. But, but yeah, so, so have that be where you dump really all of the value. So, oh, hey, I made this recipe or this and that. And then have your, have your internal stuff separate because the people who aren't in the fold don't know what any of that stuff means, right? And they'll start to wonder, well, is this group really even for me? Because this like, I don't know what, what is PV?
Yeah.
They're not even a customer, right? Like they're, what was PV? Why do I care about, I don't care about PV. So you, you want to keep those things separate for sure.
And so like, a number of my team members have Get Oiling as well. In fact, they jumped on the bandwagon before, before I even did. And I'm thankful that they convinced me to come over. And so we could all drive to that collective prospecting group from our own Get Oiling systems, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. And then what you would just do is, you know, with you maybe being an administrator of that group or however you guys wanted to do it, you just want to be mindful that you are, well, just be mindful of the space you're playing. And obviously when you're, when you've got multiple people adding different people and prospecting and stuff like, you know, work with converting those who are yours and, you know, be your, make sure everybody is in agreement to be respectful of that. But yeah, so, so functionally, system wise, if you have a secret group, I do want to give you guys some clarity there on, on what to do with our system. So you would set up your landing page similarly. Maybe instead of having it routed to that page, because they wouldn't be able to access it right away. You obviously don't want to do that. You would just have it go, go to your website, which it can do by default. That was one of the two button options that we had available under settings here on Amelia's page. And then in your campaign, your corresponding campaign, you would have those instructions. So step one, add me as a friend on Facebook. Here's the link. Step two, you know, here's, I'm, I'm going to, and now of course, I'm going to add you to the group, right? Hit reply and say such and such, and I will add you to the group. Or just by virtue of them having opted in, you now know that this is someone who you can simply invite to. Because in Facebook groups, you can invite people by email as well.
Okay. That makes sense.
Yep. But, but that would be, I would keep a secret group really for, like, that's for teammates, you know? So if somebody gets started, I would actually, this is the kind of thing, if you have a secret group that's for your team, then I would take the, I would, I would take the initiative to create a welcome new members kind of campaign. And when you list out the sort of resources that are available to them, you could include that as maybe a link. Say, and you know, and oh, by the way, we have a private community here. And, you know, you've, you've already, well, I mean, in this case, you've got somebody new, you're entering them manually typically. People aren't just going to go sign themselves up for a list. But that could be a thing that you put in a campaign. And to your point of what you said a couple of minutes ago about, you know, just getting around to the getting things done where writing campaigns are concerned. I get it. It, it can be a little nerve wracking, brain racking, time sucking to, you know, to think like, oh, what am I going to write? And for how long and about what? And I'm not even good at this. This isn't what I do. Like, I understand. I would think of it from this perspective, anytime that you set out to do something with this system, ask yourself how what you are doing is going to save you time in the future. Then it might motivate you a bit more to just get it done. So think about the things that you already do and find yourself repeating. The things that you say, the things that you share. Plug those into this system so that they don't have to repeat themselves for you, right? So if you want somebody who, you know, they're like, oh, tell me more about oils. And you've created an eight minute video, say, okay, cool. Here, go to this website, put your information in and it's going to send you everything that you need. And then, you know, reach out when you're ready. And you could even have an email in your campaign that says, you know, reach out and let me know two times that worked for you this week to sit down together and talk about what you've just seen, right? And, and so that way, yes, it's going to take you some time to put it all together. And if you follow the flow that I outlined last week in the training, which you should absolutely watch, considered an investment along with the workbook that is created there. Like it will help you, you'll be able to repeat that process over and over again, as many times as you want. And you repeat that process to remove something that takes a lot of time in your life. So that it does itself and now you have time to do other things. Does that make sense?
Yes, it makes perfect sense. If I create these kind of like the welcome campaign and like a maybe specific prospecting campaign that is targeting the different lines of product that we have. So maybe I have a prospecting one that's for savvy and I have a prospecting one for fitness peeps and I have, you know, all these different campaigns. Am I able to share those campaigns with the members that are also on Get Oiling in my downline?
That is a request we've gotten. Currently you can't do that, but that's on our wishlist.
Okay.
You could like copy and paste it into like a Word doc or something like that and share it that way. But they'd have to recreate it at the moment.
Okay.
It's on the radar. Yeah. It's on, it's on the radar, super on the radar. I would love for that.
So it just would be really great, like for duplication purposes. Cause I, I wouldn't consider myself completely green in the technical aspect, but I am certainly not an expert. And if, if I feel a little overwhelmed by it, then I know there's a number of my people in my team that will feel really overwhelmed. So if I can make the process easier for them, once I get my foundation set up, then that would be perfect.
Yeah, absolutely. Agreed. Agreed. Yeah. What you want is for people to feel like, yes, I can do that too. And, and if you can get enough people to feel that about what you're doing. And that's why it's so important for you to leverage other resources and for you to, you know, not always be the, the answer, not always have the answer to every question, to be able to say, okay, well, I can tell you what I know, but I can tell you that this video right here is going to explain everything that you need to know. And, and, and if somebody can say, oh, well, I can point to a video and share a good idea, then that's when things start taking off. And if you can create something like that, that your team can then use, then yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Point heard. All right. Val had a question pertaining, going back to the Facebook groups and, and how we might go about using those or driving people to them. Val asked, is a closed group all right? I would actually say that the, a closed group, so for prospects, not a secret group, right? So for teammates, secret group's fine. But for prospects, it should be a closed group. So if it's an open group, then why is it a private community, right? We can't really call it something exclusive if it's not exclusive. So I would make it a closed group for sure. And then all they have to do, if it's a closed group, is if we set it up like we set up Amelia's example here or that you saw earlier, when you click off of this page that you're looking at right now, it takes you to that Facebook link and then you would just have to hit join. So you've then, you've sent them to where they need to go and they hit join and they're there. Now they need to get approved, totally fine. But that, that's kind of a part of the panache there, right? Like people need to feel like they're joining something that they can't get anywhere else. Perfect. Team invite group is closed. Yep. That's the right way to do it. Perfect. All right. Thank you, Nicole, for, for coming out with us today. And you all are more than welcome. I mean, just, we, this is why we're doing this. Want to be able to work with you face to face or voice to voice, working through our, our questions here with the system. All right. So we are five past the hour. Didn't go too far over. Thank you, guys. Greg, do you have anything you want to add?
No, thanks, everyone. A bunch of quest, or great questions. Keep them coming. Yeah. If you want to come on live next time, keep that in mind, put that in the back of your mind and we'll see you next week.
Yeah. Fantastic. See you then.
See you.